Good evening and welcome to our September 17, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Rosa Holloway.
Here.
John Delulo, and he is absent. I did receive notification that he would be absent this evening. Maria Carney.
Here.
Dr. Jeff Rivera.
Here.
Brandon Whaley.
Here.
Carmelo Aquendo.
Here.
Tabitha Rubin, and she will be absent, and I also received notification of her absence this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have Quorum and Mr. Aquendo as voting members this evening.
Thank you. Do I have approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I have a motion made by Ms. Holloway and a second by Mr. Aquendo. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes five zero. First case on the agenda, DRC case number nineteen dash sixty point oh six, twenty nineteen dash forty. Future land use map amendment, small scale. Request low-density residential to private institution.
Hello, is it okay if we can read both together?
The other case associated is DRC case number, ordinance number nineteen dash ninety-five point oh seven, twenty nineteen dash forty-one. Type of application, rezoning. Request from R1, single-family residential to be professional.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Planning Commission, and I see you guys again. It's been awhile. My name is Avizamal Abreu, and I am here to present ordinance two thousand nineteen forty. This is a comprehensive plan amendment for a property located on thirty-seven Twenty-Fifth Street, for approximately a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred, sorry, one point thirty-two acres. There we go. That's the picture. A little bit of background on this property. Currently, it has a low-density residential future land use. The applicant is proposing a private institutional future land use. It's compatible with the surrounding area. It's actually taking away an isolated district at the moment. There's no adverse impact to city facilities, and it's compatible with the growth management strategic planning goal for the city. Both DRC and staff reviewed this application and request before August 12, 2019, and both recommended approval. And now, I'm standing here today asking for the Planning Commission, based on the sixteen findings, to also recommend approval of ordinance two thousand nineteen forty. Along with this application, we also have a rezoning application for the same property, its ordinance two thousand nineteen forty-one, for the property located on thirty-seven Twenty-Fifth Currently, the zoning is a single-family residential R1. The proposed zoning is P professional, and has a floor area ratio of point sixty. It's compatible with surrounding areas. There will be no adverse impact to city facility, and it's compatible with the growth management strategic plan goal for the city. Both DRC and staff reviewed this application and request before August 12, 2019, and recommends approval. And we recommend, and ask for recommendation of approval as well, based on the sixteen findings from the City Commission, that recommends approval of ordinance two thousand nineteen forty-one. I'm here to ask any questions, and I don't see my applicant, but they're not here.
The applicant's not present?
No.
Okay. Are there any questions from the Commission? Any comments?
Obviously, we can't ask.
Ms. Holloway, can you pull the mic closer?
Nobody heard from the applicant either, that they wouldn't be here. Aren't they?
They were notified through email. They also got the agenda. They also got the signings, the mailing. So, there was plenty of notifications. However, I have not heard from them today, no.
So, we can't ask them any question? Maybe we should postpone just for next month?
We should postpone it. It's at the Commission's pleasure. There's, staff is here, and there's, I think, people here from the community that would like to be heard as well, but it's up to the Commission.
Yeah, I think I would like to...
To a date certain?
Please, pardon?
Postpone to a date certain?
For the next month meeting, or next possible meeting that you can schedule it for?
For the next agenda?
Yeah.
The next meeting for the Commission is scheduled for October, I believe, fifteenth of this year, at six o'clock. October fifteenth, which will be the third Tuesday, yes, the third Tuesday of October of this year.
And that will give us the required time to advertise and everything?
Well, yeah, I don't know that that was an issue here, but that's going to be the next meeting, so.
For a new meeting, they have to freshly advertise?
Not necessarily. If we do it here, the meeting is a public hearing already. And we make a motion to continue to that date certain of October fifteen, there will be no needed advertisement.
Okay, I make a motion to postpone hearing.
But to continue?
To continue hearing. Hang on a second.
I'll second it.
Hold on. Just waiting for the motion.
DRC case nineteen dash sixty point oh six, plus...
Sorry, applicant just got here.
The applicants are here.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'll take that back.
So, the motion is withdrawn?
Motion is withdrawn.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to step forward and say a few words?
My apologies. Good afternoon. Wajid Mohammed, Muslim center of St. Cloud. I was really sitting in the car park, ten minutes now, waiting for more support. Evident for it, they didn't come yet.
Okay.
But I'm here to answer whatever questions you may have.
Did you state your address?
My personal address is twenty-six twenty-eight Ballmore Court, Kissimmee, Florida.
Thank you.
Now, it says a Muslim center, okay, but is it a gathering place? That's what you...
It's a Muslim center of St. Cloud. It's a place where we will congregate to pray. Our busiest day is on a Friday, between the hours of one-thirty to two-thirty. And then, when the holy month of Ramadan comes around, we assemble at nighttime from about eight o'clock till about nine-thirty.
Okay.
Our community is growing, but, you know, we don't see any sort of difficulties in terms of, when I looked at the questions and answers on the application, in terms of traffic problems and any other issue that might cause any hindrance to the community, I don't see it. Absolutely not, because Fifth Street is a very quiet street. You have right on the corner Saint Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church.
Right.
The church, there's a school right there. Adjacent to the property is you have the strip mall with Publix and Aldi's, and Aldi's are just Dunkin' Donuts and everybody there. Next to us is the Transition Home, and I understand that the house next door from us was just sold.
And then, you have Bishop Grady.
Right, right, right.
Now, are you planning on enlarging the building, or are you keeping...
Well, no, we're going to remove that building.
Oh, okay.
We are removing that building. We have already submitted all the engineering and architectural plans to move forward. It did cost some money to, you know, to put everything together. We didn't know that it was going to cost this much. But right now, you know, we raise, in the process of raising the funds, we have raised sufficient funds to start the project, to get it off the ground. And we feel that once we start it, people would see that, you know, in the Muslim community, we'll be able to get contributions from neighboring Muslim centers.
Okay. That's all I need to know.
What's the size of the new building?
It will be, I think, eight thousand square feet. That's top and bottom. The first floor would be four thousand square feet. But we would not be constructing eight thousand square feet as we speak initially. We are just concentrating on getting the first floor going, so that we could have, you know, members coming in and meeting and stuff like that. And then, in the future, we will go up with the second floor. But the architectural plans, the drawing, the engineering work has already done, you know, for the future, to go a second floor.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
You're speaking about the future. You have a timeline of how long it would probably be by the time you do it?
Well, we figure if we get your blessings and approval, we will probably start sometime in November. So, we're really looking to get it done by next year before June. That is when the holy month of Ramadan starts. So, we're contemplating on having it completed by then. That's the first floor. The first floor. On the second floor, you know, maybe later on in the year, we will, you know, take on that project.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I have none.
I'll open it up to the public comments at this point, and we have three people that like to come up and speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ruby Fadner. State your name and address for the record, please.
Ruby Fadner, two forty-three Millcon Drive in Sugar Mill Mobile Home Park. My concern is traffic. Now, Fifth Street is not the quiet little street from Brown Chapel over to Old Canoe Creek Road. And there's a lot of traffic, because they're going in the back way to Aldi's and Dunkin' Donuts and all those. And when you come up to Fifth Street and Old Canoe Creek Road, we can hardly get out onto Old Canoe Creek Road, because there's so much traffic on Old Canoe Creek Road, that it's very difficult to come out and get across to Walmart and that one. And I just am concerned that there's just going to be too much traffic. All these new communities growing up around St. Cloud is making so much more traffic. One-ninety-two is getting so congested. And I just feel that that location is not an ideal location for something that's going to bring a lot more traffic into that little area and surrounding areas. I thought, you know, out maybe like, you know, south of St. Cloud, Little Manor, or, you know, a little bit east towards Harmony or something would be more appropriate for something that's going to have a lot of people coming there. And that's my main concern, because I live right there off of Brown Chapel, and Brown Chapel's getting busy. And the more traffic's on One-ninety-two, the more traffic is coming down Brown Chapel and Old Canoe Creek Road, because of people don't want to travel One-ninety-two. So, that is my main complaint, my main concern.
I've got next Denny Britlinger. Hopefully, I said that right?
Yeah, that's close enough.
Thank you. State your name and the address for the record.
My name is... My name is Denny Britlinger, and I reside at thirty-one seventy-two Sugar Mill Lane, St. Cloud, Florida. As Ruby, we have a few people here from, we live in Sugar Mill Mobile Home Park, and we have a problem there already. We have several people that use motorized wheelchairs to get across Brown Chapel to get up to Walmart, or some of them go shopping at Aldi's and use the medicine shop up there, and they use Staples. And we're having a problem already with people getting across that street, which is Brown Chapel. And the other thing that I can't see where it's any benefit to our community. I've been in other communities that's had these Muslim centers put in and stuff, and I don't see any benefit to our community to have it here. This fellow that is talking about putting it in, he's from Kissimmee. And, you know, why don't he do it in Kissimmee? That's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Karen Sampson. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Karen Sampson, and I live at thirty-sixty-five Cross Creek Court, also in Sugar Mill Mobile Home Park. I agree with both Ruby and Denny, but I also think it is, you know, that the area is already zoned as residential, and a lot of these residential areas are being consumed by businesses and, you know, what's called professional areas. When I moved here, I liked this town, because it was the small-town atmosphere. If you keep moving things in that are going to be professional or retail or whatever, especially in this area where there are so many residents already, it's going to, it just destroys the whole aesthetic of the area. And as Denny said, the traffic on Brown Chapel, we have a difficult time getting out of there. We have people who like to walk for exercise, and we can't even get across Brown Chapel Road. There's no crosswalk there for us or anything. So, it creates, that in and of itself creates an issue. So, we're going to have to be even more diligent at being seniors. Sometimes, we're not quite, you know, looking ahead of us. We're going to have to be more diligent in crossing roads and going down that area to get to Walmart on Fifth, and we're going to have to look for even more traffic now. So, we would like to keep it as a residential area, if at all possible. We, like I said, there aren't that many left. It's all strip malls, all highway, all, you know, it's like having it in our own backyard. So, I would appreciate if you would take into consideration my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak at this time?
The applicant wants to talk.
On the microphone, please.
The applicant, I believe, wants to talk.
Yeah, that's right. Last call for the public to comment. It's appropriate.
Anybody else from the public? I'm going to close it out to the public, open back up to the Commission. If the applicant would like to come up and say a few things.
On the point that the gentleman said that I live in Kissimmee.
Sir, it's okay to be on the microphone, but address your comments to the Commission, please.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Yes, my residence is in Kissimmee, but I'm a member of the community, the Muslim community. The chairman of the board is Dr. Ahmed Aido, who has a very successful practice right here on St. Cloud. He lives in St. Cloud. Most of the members, ninety-nine point nine percent of the members, do live and reside in Kissimmee, in St. Cloud, Florida. The traffic that we speak about that's coming from the west to east on Fifth Street is because of the infrastructure that's been placed right now on One-ninety-two. If you drive up by Home Depot and Walmart there, you're going to see there's a lot of traffic, construction that's happening there. And people, drivers, they look for the easiest route out, so they go through the backroads. But I am certain that once the conditions there improve with respect to the development of the roads and stuff like that, the traffic would not come down there. I don't see a lot of traffic there. I drive by there every day, because I go to the gym, come down Brown Chapel, there's a guard there on the corner of Fifth Street, there's a guard at the school. And the oldest home on the east side of Fifth Street, of Brown Chapel, is the house that's neighboring to us. Every other thing is commercial, even the Transition Home. When you go down further to Canoe Creek Road and Fifth Street, there is a retired home, home care center there. So, and adjacent to the building is Aquinas, the playfield, and then you have the big strip mall. So, with respect to residential in that area, there's nothing but one, which is right next door to us. And I mean, with all due respect, I don't even see that guy here, owner of that property is here, making any sort of argument or contribution with respect for us not having that, you know? I mean, this is a place of worship. Everybody has, everybody is entitled for a place of worship. You know, it's very prevalent all over St. Cloud. There's communities, the former mayor, he's a preacher, I'm involved. I live in Kissimmee, and I come to the Interfaith Base, Interfaith Base here, every Monday at the St. Cloud Police Department. I come there, and I make my contribution to the St. Cloud community. We give, we make contributions here. So, you know, I'm asking the council to use good judgment. I mean, we don't have a Muslim center here in St. Cloud. The nearest place that we go to is on Tacker Street. It's on Tacker Street, and it's a bit far for us, you know? We've been renting a place right behind Walmart there for the last five years. We are a very disciplined crowd. On Fridays, our cars are parked, not one time there's any incident of police or anybody to come there to access, to remove the cars. Prior to coming here, we were given permission to build, but we had setbacks in terms of finance to get the building going, and hence the reason why it was advised by the engineers and stuff like that, let's do it this way. That's why. And at that time, we had the police department. We had the people from the electrical, the water, the construction people. Everybody came there and voiced their opinion, and no one at that time had foreseen or projected any sort of obstacles that might be, you know, in the future of any sort. And if you look at that land where it is, it's a very big, it's a wide-open land, and how it's going to be developed, it's going to have a very huge drive, you know, to get in. And we have functions there right now. We have Eid celebrations, and whenever we have functions, we notify the police department, and they come there. And our people are very disciplined, organized, very methodical people. And from, over the last two years since we have acquired that property, we've been having family days and picnics there, and nobody complained of anything, not one person of any sort of, "Miss Kandarko," or "the traffic was bad," or anything, you know? So, I'm asking the community, I'm asking you members of, you know, St. Cloud Council, you know? I do respect what everybody has to say about, you know, walking and getting on the wheelchair and stuff like that, and I have great respect. I have a dad that's ninety-one years, who's on a wheelchair, and I push him around, and I understand. But there's a place for us to pray. It's a place for us where we raise our hand and ask God to help not us alone, but our community, our people, you know? So, we just asking for your support. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Just for clarification, you stated that your busy time is going to be between one and...
Oh, sorry.
Okay. The clarification, you said that your busy times would be between like one and two in the afternoon, and then during...
Every Friday.
Every Friday, so it's been one day of the week.
One day of the week.
And then, during Ramadan, you'd be, your busy time would be between eight and nine, roughly.
Eight and nine, eight and nine to nine o'clock. And we have, we have constructed on the engineering plan sufficient parking, and the city could attest to that. I mean, we have done everything with respect to the guidelines, the protocols of everything that the city asks us to do. So, we have more than enough parking space to accommodate, and I promise you, if any reason that it go out, it will not, because we don't even have thirty, forty cars coming there, you know? And I'm certain that, you know, we are resident of St. Cloud, you know? We're here to build the community. We're not here to destroy it. We're not here to just, you know, do and leave, you know? We're here, you know? Thank you.
No, thank you. I'm not sure how my fellow colleagues feel, but, I mean, I don't really see an issue with traffic as far as...
Mr. Chairman, if you're going to close a public meeting, then you can start discussion. You may, just clarify that, and you can announce.
Okay. Close to the public right now, and we're going to open up to the Commission.
Well, I was going to ask the, Mr. Abreu, as far as the traffic on the street and all of that, that's a city road, or street, correct?
That's correct.
So, as far as the size of this property, does it require a traffic study?
No.
Because of the size of it.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, without the requirement of that, I have sixteen factors to consider. Hearing public comment, I understand some folks' opinion on it, but sixteen factors are pretty clear. I don't have any questions on those, so that's where I am.
Until they show us the plans, that we know how many parking spaces or anything else, so we don't know either.
Well, all that will come later on, though.
This is a land use and zoning case.
And the fact was stated correctly. Everything around that, except for the adjacent property, is zone professional.
Yeah, it's already there.
That corner is intended to move that direction. So, keeping two lots there as residential doesn't really make sense when we have somebody who has a legitimate request to rezone it, and they'll go through the rest of the process.
And I remember they were here a couple of years ago, and we approved it then.
Yes, we did.
And now, it's just because they're going to put a new building up.
Yep.
If there's no further comments or questions, do I have a motion, and we need to motion each one individually?
Yeah, we have two cases to consider, so make sure to note it on your motions for each, please.
Do I have a motion for the first one, first case?
I'll find the case number.
The first one.
All right. So, I'll make a motion for approval, based on the sixteen findings as presented, for DRC case number nineteen dash six zero point oh six, ordinance two zero one nine dash four zero.
A second.
I have a motion by Mr. Whaley and a second by Ms. Holloway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Passes five zero. Do I have a motion in the second case?
So, I'll make a motion, based on the sixteen findings as presented, to approve DRC case number nineteen dash nine five point oh seven, ordinance two zero one nine dash four one.
A second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Whaley and a second by Ms. Holloway. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? It passes five zero. Next case, DRC case number nineteen dash sixty-five point zero two. Type of application, parking determination.
Good evening. I'm Christopher Mills. I'm a principal planner with the Planning and Zoning Department. This item is for a parking determination where the applicant is requesting a lower required parking ratio for a townhome community with thirty-two dwelling units. The subject site is located south of Seventeenth Street and east of Delaware Avenue. In this picture, I think you can see St. Cloud Middle and Michigan Avenue Elementary Schools, just to the southwest of the property. So, again, this is a thirty-two unit townhome subdivision, and the townhome models will have two and three bedrooms, and they'll all have a single-car garage. The applicant has stated that the development is marketed towards an elderly clientele. So, based on this, the size and configuration of the dwelling units, as well as the population demographic, that this development is being... population demographic that, uh, this del-, development is being marketed towards, uh, the applicant is requesting the required, uh, four and a half parking spaces be reduced to three parking spaces with nine additional spaces located on street. As justification, the applicant has also noted that they have, uh, constructed a similar development, uh, with, uh, some larger units than these, uh, proposed here with only three parking spaces provided. This development's at, uh, Brown Chapel and, and Fifth. Very topical. So staff finds this application to be consistent with the city's strategic goals related to growth management. And staff is recommending approval and requesting that this planning commission also recommend approval. The applicant is here for questions.
Thank you. Do you happen to like to step up and say a few words? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Sean Hendel, Hanson Walton Associates, Eight Broadway, Kissimmee, Florida, three four seven four one. Um, I don't know if you guys recall the application. Uh, this was Dover Village, uh, being built by Snow Construction, who's my client and the applicant. Nikki's built, uh, four other townhouse developments within St. Cloud. Uh, he's learned from a couple of them. So he has two that are, that are pretty high dense, uh, ten units per acre. Um, and that's really pushing the envelope and he was trying to follow a model that he had in Fort Lauderdale and, uh, West Palm Beach. What he's found is his units, when he does closer to six units per acre, that he doesn't have a lot of the challenges he has on his more dense products. They have more open space, they have more ability to do, um, a more living area. So this project, they have sold or contracted thirty of the units. So it's under construction right now. Uh, when it was brought through, it was brought through as a multifamily R three development. Um, we changed the units to address some issues. So we want to, to market the townhomes to the elderly, but the elderly don't like two-story units. So the townhomes are all one-story units. And then, one of the issues that he had with parking, and it's more from like his patagolia and our sanct-, and his sanctuary product, is the buildings are anywhere from two-unit buildings, one of them to four to six to eight-unit buildings. So we're dealing with an eight-unit building, your building's two hundred feet long and you end up with drainage issues behind, trying to figure out how to put a drainage system in the back of the building and the front. And then the interior lots don't have any relief for parking. So if they had more cars, there's no way to widen the driveways or give them more area to park. Now, I went to all four of his developments that he's done in St. Cloud and he doesn't have a parking issue at any of them. So we've always tried to park his units at three spaces per unit. So, the one that's, that was just mentioned, which is, um, Town Center, which is on the corner of Brown Chapel and Fifth Street. The, um, Town Center development is, is much larger units, um, two-story and one-story. And in those units, they were parked at three spaces per unit. When I went out there and I went out there over a five-week period and I looked at them both at six-thirty in the morning and nine o'clock at night and afternoons and in the, on the weekends and it, and, and during the week, to see how the parking's going. And we didn't have one incidence of either patagolia, which is ten units per acre, or Town Center, that we had any cars parked outside of a driveway or a parking space. Um, there was a lot of the garages, when I saw them open, that did not have cars in them. They had the containers for the, for the garbage and stuff in them, but, uh, Town Center on average had seventy-six additional spaces for forty-six units. And that's parked at three, three spaces per unit. So when we brought this project through, through the PSP, the zoning and everything, we were, we were, to understand that we were parked as multifamily, that we were gonna be two spaces per unit. Nikki wasn't comfortable with two, he wanted three spaces. When you look at the R threes district, under setbacks, under open space, under, um, accessory structures, which three point nine, point three, point four, and point seven, townhouses are listed with the multifamily under that, and that's what our zoning is, R three. So the only place that townhouses were listed differently, and they're not listed, is under the parking ordinance, under Division eighteen. And under the parking ordinance, they call them single-family attached. And that's where they say it's four spaces plus one visitor for every two homes. Um, single-family attached is, I guess I'm old, but as, as I look at it, when we looked at all the studies, studies in Virginia and Florida and Colorado and Washington State and Wisconsin, were the studies that we were referencing, um, row houses and townhouses are multifamily in those studies. They're not single-family attached. Single-family attached was after World War Two, when a lot of the husbands or wives didn't come home, they had to have an income. And if they didn't have children to help support them, then create income by making a single-family attached structure. And that was your home, a single-family home, that they divided into rental units. And that's how the term single-family attached came about. So, the difference between single-family detached, which is a detached structure on a single lot, a duplex is a two-structure unit on a single lot. And then a townhome is a multi-structure unit on single lots. So it's a difference of duplex. All of these units are two-unit buildings. And the reason they're two-unit buildings is what I was telling you, there was issues that, that he was trying to overcome on his townhouse developments with the interior units and with the drainage. So we created this. So he's, he's contracted, of the thirty-two units, he's contracted to sell thirty of them right now. There's one family, everything else is retirees or investors. So that there's only one family that's proposed to live, it's a transition family, it's actually one of Nick's employees. He's building a house out in Bay Lake, he's selling his house in St. Cloud, and he's gonna live in this house in transition till his house in Bay Lake is done. And then he'll be moving out of this and, and, and renting it. Um, the units are either two-bedroom with a den or three-bedroom, and I have the floor plans with me. The, um, we just don't want the development to look like a sea of brick pavers or concrete. Um, we want it to be nice, we want it to have good aesthetics with landscaping, and we want it to be parked right. So, in buildings, we try to do buildings and we say, well, we're gonna do the air conditioner sized correctly. Well, we wanna do the same thing with parking. We don't want four and five spaces of parking on these lots when the two-bedroom house with the, the retired firemen, which we have three retired firemen moving in, um, from New York, those three houses, I mean, they don't need all those cars.
It's already under construction?
Yes, ma'am. We've already been through all of the, the approvals and the infrastructure's under construction now. The homes are not yet, we're planning to start the homes in October. Um, but right now, we're doing the base and the sewer and the water and that stuff.
But you're not actually, uh, it is not a fifty-five and over community?
No, it's not an age-restricted community, it's just-
Anybody can move in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, see, I, I, if you, if you, uh, look at, uh, what's it called, Pine, um, you know, right down Michigan Avenue after the bus barn on the left, just bef-, you know, right before the golf course on the left-hand side, there's a subdivision in there. And, uh, with, with this being so close to school, it's, it's a lot of families that will purchase in there because it's close to school and their children can walk to school. Um, and they got, in that particular subdivision, they got cars parked everywhere because you got a three-bedroom unit, you got teenagers, uh, you're gonna have a two, three, four cars. Uh, so for us, to reduce the, uh, the parking spaces from four to three, it may be good for some of the homes, but for others, four spaces is not gonna be enough. Because as you, as you said, the garage generally is full, especially if it's only a one-car garage, they're not parking their cars in there because they got, you know, let's face it, we don't have basements here, we have to store our stuff in the garage.
Yes, ma'am.
So you have all the cars outside.
So the, um, so sanctuary, so Nikki owns some units in Sanctuary. And it has an HOA. And they let the people know when they move into Sanctuary that they cannot have any cars outside of their driveway. And if they do, they have to find another place to store those vehicles. So they don't have a single car outside of a driveway, it's a proven fact. Nikki, again, owns twelve of these units and he can, they can constrict that. But one thing that you always look at when you're looking at a parking study is, let's say we have that issue. Let's say there's more than, more cars needed than what is provided for with a two-car driveway and a one-car garage. Then, these units are two units and they're wider, so they have additional land next to them. And they have the ability, that, all the driveways are out of pavers, so the HOA has the ability to tell somebody, if you have an additional car, you need to widen your driveway. And that's what we're, that's what is right now, is we have these super wide driveways that cover up all the land to meet the four and a half, when if everyone has one or two cars, if somebody has three or four and they need to add the driveway, they have the space to do it. And that's why we, with the development, the HOA can monitor that and the city doesn't have to worry about it. The HOA will make sure that the property stays nice. I mean, if you look at any of the other developments, every time I, I come here and someone's referencing a townhouse development, they always talk about Town Center. That's Nikki's. And he is part of that. So he owns a unit in there and he's part of that HOA and they control their own. So, when he does a project, Nikki's here, he's part of St. Cloud. His office is right down on New York Avenue and, and he does not do anything in his community to try to hurt his community. But he also doesn't wanna create a community that's nothing but parking when he doesn't have users or, or tenants that need that parking. So when you look at the ordinance, the ordinance says as a single family, that you need to have a two-car garage and two spaces outside the garage. For seniors, they don't want or need a two-car garage. So these units are all one-car garage and then they have two spaces outside the garage. So the units themselves have one car and the ordinance even specifies two-car garages for a single family. So these are one-car garages and then there are two spaces outside of the garage at each, each one of the units. So of the, if we went to four and a half, we'd have a hundred and forty-four parking spaces for thirty-two units. So a hundred and forty-four cars for thirty-two homes. We're providing a hundred and five spaces for thirty-two homes, plus six-one space, really a hundred and eleven, ability to park a hundred and eleven without impacting any, anything for public safety or anything else. To have a hundred and forty-four spaces for thirty-two homes that are less than fourteen hundred square foot homes is, is, with one-car garages, really difficult.
You said you only gonna have six extra spaces for the-
We have nine addition, we have three. How would this development was all put together was as multifamily?
Mm-hmm.
And that's where we thought the code had us. And in fact, we were approved at the city council with the three spaces per unit. And then, our construction plans were already into staff and staff came back and said, hey, one week later, we had our approval for construction. And the next city council meeting, they came back to another townhouse development, which was six and eight-unit buildings, and said, you have to do four and a half spaces. So they came back to us and said, hey, council wants four and a half spaces. I'm like, okay, well, that's just gonna make everything asphalt or brick or concrete, it's gonna look awful and we don't have that need for this development. But they said, well, they're gonna, that's how they wanna treat it. So, we didn't go back to city council, we changed the plans to create four and a half spaces. But to create four and a half spaces, if, if you put that on, if, if somebody needs it, we obviously can put it there for them. But if, what we're asking is let us build them at three spaces and if the need's there, we'll add the additional parking. So let the HOA, it's right in the HOA guidelines that you can't park off of pavement. So let the HOA control that and let's size right the development. So, the reason for the four and a half spaces came about when there was a parking problem in some neighborhoods. So there's a neighborhood off of Michigan Avenue that was one that was coming to the council that the neighbor kept parking in front of her house but had no cars in their own garage. But when you went into that neighborhood, there was cars and trucks parked on both sides of the street all the way down.
Exactly, that's probably-
And they had multiple families living there, so-
So this will have no street parking?
This will have, will allow street parking on this, on the south side of Reese Court, which is six spaces. And then on the north side, there's no parking allowed, but I put the fire hydrants on the north side as well. So I don't have any parking adjacent to the fire hydrants, but on the south side, there's an ability to put six cars there. Where they be needed, I don't think so, but they're there. And then at the end of the court, there's three spaces for any visitors.
So you're, you're, you're counting, in the nine that you're quoting here, are you're counting the on-street parking already?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
So you really don't have nine extra parking spaces? You have three plus what, however many cars fit on the, on the street?
Yes, where we, between driveways-
Yeah.
-in front of the homes, on one side of the street, which is just like we do for a single family. So when we do single family, we have to show four and a half spaces. We put hydrants on one side and we put parked cars on the other side. So they're only allowed to park on the one side of the street. It's, that's the exact same way we do single family to create four and a half. It's, there's no difference, the same exact process.
I can see the people parking smack in front of the fire hydrant.
Okay.
It'll be in violation.
And they'll get a ticket 'cause it's signed, that there's no parking on that side of the street.
So, so quick clarification for me. Basically, what we're talking about is, um, there's conflicting, there's a requirement in code and then there's an ordinance that are in disagreement?
Well, throughout the, the land development code, there's conflicting items. So under R three, townhouses are grouped together with multifamily. So as multifamily, Division eighteen requires two spaces per unit. And that's how this project was taken through the process entire way. Two spaces per unit was our requirement. We provided three spaces per unit because that's what Nikki says is the demand for these type of facilities that he owns. So we did three spaces per unit and then we developed the project off of that. We went all the way through the process. Division eighteen doesn't say townhouses, but it says, single family, and then it has in parentheses detached and attached. And, and it's not only St. Cloud staff, staff and, and Kissimmee's different because they have townhouses, but, and the county considers townhouses, single-family attached as well. So they're saying, single-family attached, you meet this parking requirement. And, and Kissimmee, they have a division for townhouses, which is two spaces per unit, same as multifamily. So, we went through as multifamily because R three is our zoning and everywhere under R three, everything dealing with setbacks and everything else, townhouses are, are listed with multifamily. And then when you come to Division eighteen, townhouses aren't listed, but single-family attached was, and that's where they came up with the four and a half space. I don't disagree with that, with, that's how they interpret their code.
But, but right now, right now where we're standing, you were already approved and the, and the city council approved you for four point, uh-
City council approved us for three.
For three.
Staff asked us, because they changed another development to four and a half, asked us to revise our plans to four and a half. We did it because we had to get under construction with these loans, so we created the four and a half and we told staff we'll come back with a parking determination and they said that they would support it, that it made sense and that we would come forward. So I submitted a parking determination, staff reviewed it, no comments, everybody supports it, they agree with us and that's why we're, I don't have any problem with the staff report, they, they're recommending approval as well. We were approved all the way through. We've never been told by council or anybody else that we had to have four and a half. Staff asked us to revise our construction plans to show four and a half because that's what the new code, or that was the interpretation that city council had two weeks after they heard our, our case.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, also, this is a, uh, an issue that in, um, previous code iterations was exclusively for the commission to determine. It's not the case since the land development code changed and parking determination is a recommendation item or an advisory position for the commission to the council. So you, tonight, you're making a recommendation as opposed to a final decision on this determination.
Yeah, that was my next question. I don't have sixteen findings to consider, so I'm lost.
No, you've got, right, you've just got the application based upon the information that's been included. To Mr. Hendel's point, though, in your memo, uh, I'll just look for the date on this, I can't find, but in your information, it, it, it lays out what the land development code requires, where they're starting from, which it states that the required parking ratio under the land development code for this, R three is four parking spaces per dwelling unit, which is two spaces in the garage or carport and two in the driveway, plus one space per two dwelling units in designated on-street parking areas for visitor or short-term parking within the subdivision. There's thirty-two lots, so just doing the math, four times thirty-two is a hundred and twenty-eight, and then that, uh, on-street, one per two, that's another sixteen, that's what gets you to the one forty-four, which the applicant wants to deviate from to the one oh five.
Yeah, see, I can, I can see four, uh, parking spaces, you know, two in the garage, two outside, uh, you know, rather than four and a half, but, uh, three- outside, you know, rather than four-and-a-half, but three, I mean, the on-street parking, I'm not even counting that, you got that anyway. That's just, people have a lot of cars.
Yeah, you, you made the comment earlier that nobody uses the garage.
That's right.
That there's two spaces out front.
Yeah.
So every one of our units have two spaces out front. We don't have two-car garages, there are one-car garages.
But see.
But if no one's using the garage and they're using that for their storage, which is what Town Center was.
Well, on a one-car, on a one-car, yeah, they don't have room in the garage. On a two-car, they probably have room for a car in the garage.
Okay. But we don't have, again, we don't have two-car garages. They're all one-car garages.
But again, I mean, the bottom line is if the HOA, when established, has established parking areas, if they park in front of a hydrant, they're breaking the law, so that's a whole different story. This was previously approved at three, and they did what staff asked, but staff is in agreement with them bringing this back to council. I don't see an issue with giving the council back the football and saying, you already said this was okay, is it still okay? It makes perfect sense to me, and I know in my community, I've got a two-car garage, two-car driveway and space to park two cars in front of my house. I have two vehicles. I park them both in the garage, but I have neighbors who have five and six cars and park all over the street and cause all kinds of havoc, but that's an HOA issue. And sometimes people park in front of hydrants, and I sometimes wish a small fire breaks out so the fire department can come and knock their window out. But again, this is just sending it back to the council to reapprove what they already approved.
Um, for the record, the site development plan was approved by council with three parking spaces, I believe it was three parking spaces. And then, so when they came back, I believe at Platte, I mean, they're at the end, at the very end, it wasn't a pleasant meeting, we told Mr. Hindle that he needed to provide, show us that he can provide four-and-a-half parking spaces within this, and he did, and he did. But like he said, he, it wasn't desirable, and then so he has requested this parking determination.
Yeah, we can provide the four-and-a-half, and that's what we're telling you. If there becomes a need where we have residents that have more than the three spaces that they're allotted on their lot, then the HOA will make them go to the four-and-a-half design and put in a bigger, wider driveway and park additional cars off the roadway. And that's, it's no different than what Nick does in his other developments. So Nick, again, he owns 12 of these units. He's gonna maintain owning 12 of them, so he'll be part of the HOA anyways. And if you've seen anything, obviously, in St. Cloud and Osceola County, that's the bar. Snow Construction's the bar for the homes they build, for the communities they build, and they always set the bar. And, you know, I sit there in a meeting at the Osceola County a couple of months ago, and everybody was referencing, you know, they're gonna do a moratorium, and they want homes like Snow Construction does, not like D.R. Horton does. And I was like, okay, well, D.R. Horton has really nice product and a lower-end product. It's a market. But they always reference Nicky's because he does everything correct. He's very astuteous, and he has really good people that work, even one of my sons, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Sean, the only thing that worries me, because you and I are neighbors, it's, you know, the fire trucks, the ambulances, everything. Is that gonna be?
Yeah, so what we did is, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we created three off-street parking spaces.
Okay.
And then when you enter the cul-de-sac, we put no parking signs on pavement. So all of the cul-de-sac is no parking, and then the no parking signs extend down to Delaware for everything on the north side of the road.
Okay.
So if anyone parks there, the police can take it or they can tow them. So we've made it so you can't. The neighborhood will police it themselves, but you, in the cul-de-sac, you're not allowed to park a car. We didn't put houses all the way around the cul-de-sac, just on the two edges, but it doesn't matter. They can't park cars in there, but there are three parking spaces at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And we did that because if you see the plans, the landscaping at the end of the cul-de-sac is off the chart. It's absolutely beautiful. So they wanted an ability for people, they put a gazebo down there for people to go down and be able to just sit and be in nature. So that's why they put that. The neighborhood is so short that no one's gonna drive down there. They're all just gonna walk, but we put the three spaces if there's any visitors that come and use the facility. So that's how they set it up. We set up the parking. We met with the fire department. We defined the cul-de-sac. We defined how it would be, no parking on the cul-de-sac and no parking on the north side, and we signed it that way. So we've tried to make sure that public safety is number one, and that it's been accommodated in the development completely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Open it to the public. Any public comments? We close it to the public. Any final thoughts from the commission?
Nope.
So do I have a motion?
So I'll make a motion to approve, or to send a recommendation for approval to the city council for DRC case 19-65.02.
I'll second it.
I have a motion made by Mr. Whaley, and second by Ms. Carney. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Pass is 4-1.
The next meeting is October 15th.
Sounds good.
And if we could set the thermostat to 78 for that meeting.